Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the Board of County Commissioners of Pittkin County Work Session from Tuesday, May 26th. And the first item on our agenda is a community development update. And we have the whole, pretty much the whole, community development staff here with us today.
We have the community development managers, the staff. I wouldn't let them because there's too much work. So, they all know about it and really helped us with the presentation today. But if you want me to get started, this is our first in a series where you will be talking with each one of the department heads from Pittkin County. And so, we decided to go first and we actually forgot it was the day after a holiday. So, this morning, a lot of us are trying to remember what we do after a long weekend. But we wanted to let you know that the concept here is that it's very casual. And if you have things you want to talk about with community development, please bring those up. This is supposed to be, you know, just a very informal format. But as we started thinking about our hour with you, we thought, you know, we really have things we want to get into and some discussions because you already know us. So, we put some pictures up to show you who we are and the divisions of community development with, you know, our administrative division, planning and zoning and building and environmental health. So, we put everybody's picture up to let you know. And then, we put one up to kind of throw you to let you see if you actually do know us. Do you know who that guy is? And that leads me right into the fact that we are cranking along and environmental health has had numerous things come up that are unanticipated, which is pretty reflective of what we do on a daily basis. A lot of things that come up are unanticipated. So, we have not only the day-to-day work that we're, you know, getting done, but things like asbestos and the need to put on your hazmat suit or oil, excuse me, gas spills in recently, you know, up in Snowmass. Those are the type, Capital Creek, those are the things that, you know, take some time and take us away from our desk and take us away from the applications of permits that we also need to get done on a daily basis. One of the things that I wanted to show you is that we are working every day on work plans. I don't think that's showing up for you. There it is. That's just a snapshot. We didn't expect you to really get into it. A snapshot of the type of work plan that we have for each one of the divisions. And this is important in our discussion because that one happens to be building. And what we've done is we've tried to anticipate all the things that we need to do, projects that are on top of administering the building codes, projects that we need in terms of creating new building codes that are specific to us. So, we have to re-adopt, bring those before the public, bring those before you. It takes time. We do it about once every three years. We're hopefully gonna be reviewing all of the 2015 codes this year with adoption in 2016. So, it takes some time because there's a lot of amendments that are very specific to Pittkin County. And on top of that, you can see right there, I think there's 11 various projects. And we just wanted to let you know that that's gonna play into this discussion a little bit about how we accomplish what our mission is and what our goal is. In terms of trying to work on not only the work plans that we have to get done, the way we do our work and the structural issues of how we do our work are really important. And you may recall a time when your agendas were packed with land use items. And it was impossible to get on your agendas. People were waiting, waiting, waiting because there were just so many land use items. And I'll let Lance speak a little bit to that. But we did a re-hall, if you will, of the planning structure for review, of course, with the rewrite of the code and the board's approval. But we've rearranged it so that what you don't see is behind-the-scenes staff is doing 60% of the review of the applications now and the planning. So, our other boards, such as the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Hearing Officer, don't really see as much on their agendas like with your agendas. There's much fewer, there are many fewer items on the agenda. So, Lance might want to talk a little bit about why we did that and how we did that because, if you recall, there was quite a bottleneck there for a while.
Yeah, just briefly, we average over the last eight years, 141 land use applications a year. Of course, that was in 2007 and '08. That was unprecedentedly huge. And then, 2009, quite low. And then, it's coming back to be more stable, about the 130, 140 applications per year. Though, mostly that's Suzanne and Mike and me doing administrative determinations that you don't see. And when you wonder what's on your agenda versus what's happening in the department, that's really kind of a good summary that you see about 20% of the total land use applications. You, of course, see code amendments and rezonings and subdivisions, special reviews. But that's about all that you see. All the site plan reviews, what we used to call the 1041 hazard reviews, all of those things are done administratively and you only see them if there's an appeal of some kind and they're very, seldom is. The Hearing Officer gets about 10% of the applications. And what that amounts to is the site plan applications where someone is requesting use of TDRs. And that does not happen that often. Maybe 12 a year or something like that is about how many Hearing Officer applications there are. And of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission is primarily consumed with master planning. And the things that, the only things left that they see are code amendments, rezonings that then go on to you, growth management scoring, which they do independently. And the rest of their work is pretty much master plans. They no longer see the site plans. Reason being that when, originally, when I first came here, 10, what we call 1041 hazard reviews were going to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board. It would take nine to 12 months for someone to get through that process. Then, it was just the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission had these huge agendas. Then, the board said, "Well, we want to do it alone." And so, then, we were just bringing them to the Board of County Commissioners. And that meant that your agendas were relatively huge. So, in 2006 is when we made all of what used to be called 1041 reviews and what is now called site plan reviews administrating. And I think that's working really, really well because when we wrote the new code, 2006, now 10 years old, but still the new code. When we wrote that, we really got enough specific standards that I think everyone was comfortable that it could be administered by staff. There wasn't that much need for policy direction because the code itself provided that policy direction. So, now, 60% of the reviews that we're doing still takes, we tell people, 60 to 90 days. That's what it really takes to get the notice period done, the comment period from adjoining neighbors, and for us to actually prepare the approval. But that's where the majority of the work is. We foresee this number of applications being pretty stable for the next few years. We don't anticipate a big upswing or a downswing. So, that's what planning is doing. And you're all really very familiar with that.
The other part that I'll just jump right in on that with the long-range planning and what Ellen's doing a lot of right now is not only working on the master plans with the caucus groups, but we are looking at the Castle Creek Valley with the U.S. Forest Service as kind of a special area in that project. And we are also trying very hard to update our websites so that they're more interactive on the long range, not only the demographics, but, you know, where you might be in a planning process. And working with Pittkin Connect with Pat, Ellen's been working to try to get more of the hot topic items on Pittkin Connect so that people can actually come in and give their opinions and talk about it if they're not meeting-going types of people and they want to have their input. So, that's where we are with that. But in general, Ellen, a little bit more over to the side. In general, this is kind of a graphic, I think, that really explains. And I thank Tammy coaching in our office for putting this together. It's the spigot with our hose. And if you can't read that, the community development hose, the hose part says community development, staff capacity. And you can see there's a little pressure valve at the bottom. And then, the spigot's just letting it all out with all the tasks that have to happen there. And we'll get into this in a little bit more detail and hopefully have some discussion about it. But ironically, you know, all these years, we've had growth management in the community. We've never had growth management internally in our office. We don't have a limit to the amount of input as far as building permits that are coming in the door. We never have. Growth management was really more, it more affected the new development. It didn't affect what could be built in any given year. It affected how many new lots could get created. But as you'll see with this bar chart that we have, it shows that through the years, and I think that chart goes from 2005 all the way over to the first quarter of 2015, the green lines on that bar chart are the most indicative of what's going on. That's the remodel. We don't have a lot of new properties and new, in the building permit, in the building department, we don't have as many applications for new homes, per se. It's a lot of remodel. And the trend is to the remodel or the redevelopment of properties. So, that's where we're heading again. We, obviously, we're in the last two years and we're heading again this year. And so, it's not new development, it's redevelopment and intensity of that redevelopment that we're looking at.
Cindy, let me ask you a question. So, when you say a remodel, so can that be from an old foundation up? So, that could be the replacement of an entire house?
It could, it could be, but Brian, there's standards. We're just calling redevelopment, but for a remodel, the standard for a remodel, we used to have a 30% left or something.
Yes, there is, it's a zoning standard more than a building standard. But, and recently, we had somebody want, they started out doing a remodel and then decided to scrape it entirely off. We made them pull a new permit for tracking purposes. So, I think if they went 100% scrape off down the foundation, that would be a new permit.
That would be, that would be a new project, not a remodel. But, so remodels can be fairly extensive.
Yes.
Then, we're not talking about a closet and a bathroom. We could be talking about three-quarters of a house.
We could be. And, you know, we have everything from, this weekend, I spent a little bit of time because we have people that work on the weekends to actually be able to get stuff done outside of the normal workday because if you can have some focused time, we can get more permits out. And Tony Popisch was in the office this weekend and we talked a little bit about, we have everything, you know, from a chicken coop to, you know, massive remodels. And we're gonna show you a picture in a minute of the 100-page change order on a remodel. And that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. You think change order, no, in my mind, it's, oh, it's a change order. They're changing, you know, a wall, or they're changing, you know, a faucet. And no, I mean, they can be substantial change orders. So, you know, Brian, did you want to add anything to that at this point? We have some, also some pictures we wanted to show you as we move along to, showing you kind of what's on our plate.
So, could you quantify that remodel in terms of square feet? In other words, you have those 49 remodels just on there and that is equal to 10,000 square feet?
We can.
Because, because, because I think, you know, it's nice to know remodel, but the, but you don't get the intensity of it if you just say, "I have this number of remodels, but if I have one year, 20,000 square feet of remodel and the next year, 120,000," then you get a sense of what it means.
Right.
So, for 2014, it was just over 52,000 square feet. That was included in that remodel number.
In that, in that remodel. So, that's some, that's a tracking number that's, I think, interesting.
It is interesting. And actually, Ellen, the, let's see, we did the bar chart. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. So, when we started putting this presentation together, Cindy kind of asked me to kind of make a mental list or an actual list of what the building department does. So, I just kind of made a list of all the duties we do. We're not just doing plan review and we're not just doing inspections, but that's just kind of a, an idea of all the things that can happen in any given day, any given year in the building department. So, the next slide just kind of goes on to just go into, we talk about comparing to 2007 as our banner year.
Let me just, I saw code enforcement up there. So, we, the attorney's office has a code enforcement officer. Do you have, well, in theory, do you have a code enforcement officer?
Carrington worked for all, not, worked with all of us.
So, that's what you're talking about? Carrington's function? No.
No. Buildings always kind of done our own unless it escalated to.
And you're talking about the building code at that point?
We also do code enforcement. We do complaint resolution and.
On zoning?
Not the zoning side, on the building side.
We do a lot of the zoning enforcement internally and Carrington would help us with the ones that we knew would be extensive.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure it out because, you know, really, but you are doing building code.
Yes, we are.
And that sort of happens through the, through the life of the job, essentially.
Absolutely.
And, and then, you're talking about some zoning code enforcement. And that could be the houses where it should be or something.
To set back the heights, the, you know, those types of issues. But oftentimes, they sort of meld into one another.
Yes.
Did we give a building permit to someone who shouldn't have gotten a building permit because they're, you know, five feet over their property line? All those things take extensive review and research. And we tend to do those in-house.
In-house. And then, if it gets really thorny, you're asking the attorney's office for some additional help.
To help us, yes.
That would be consistent with environmental health, too. We take the lead on most of our complaints and then, depending on the situation, we contact the attorney's office and the Carrington.
Not to diminish the fact that, you know, when we gave them those, they were, they were sticky ones and they took a lot of time. So, time-wise, you know, we gave them a lot of work.
So, how do you feel about code enforcement? Do you need Carrington?
We're gonna.
Or a Carrington physician?
We feel like there is a hole without it. We're not sure if, I always liked the fact that the physician was in the attorney's office because of the authority level coming from, you know, the attorney's office. Whereas, I think more appropriately, you know, he probably worked with us a lot more.
A lot.
I could give one example of that. There was a day last week when Susan Pearson, who's our planning engineer, went out to do an inspection. And between town and W. J. on McLean Flats Road, she saw three violations of people doing earth moving without permits on McLean Flats Road and Lower River Road.
We don't let her go out anymore.
And I, no, this is a violation to all of them and, you know, never really got to her inspection. We do need that kind of help in the summertime when everybody, everybody has a yellow machine working and they don't all have permits. And that's when we really feel distressed because of all the other things we're doing to, to take the time out to write notices and violation and follow up on them is difficult. And that's what the code enforcement officer position did. We would just call that office and say, "I saw a yellow machine, there's no permit. Go take care of it."
So, do you have someone in mind? Do you do active recruiting?
It's not my position to recruit at this point. So, we're gonna.
Well, suggest, suggestions.
Yeah. We're gonna have the discussion about whether or not we're gonna be able to refill that position.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's definitely on the radar screen. It's a little bit of an unusual structure to have, you know, enforcement capability in your prosecuting kind of arm. But it really worked, I think, particularly because of Carrington's unique kind of skillset and perspective. And so, that's a discussion that we've opened up and we're gonna be having with the attorney's office as far as how do we move that forward.
And we just don't have any space for them.
Right. It is a staff 32.
We really, literally have not one seat in that office. But hopefully, that person will be in the field most of the time.
Well, the structure of a hammer, you know, is a nice handle, but you need a steel head at the end of it, so.
With that.
That's right. We're getting back to the hammer. In 2007, we kind of call that the peak time when we look at those charts, when we're trying to, are we at that level now? And we were kind of asking ourselves conceptually, are we as busy as we were in 2007? And what's really kind of shifted, what's changed from those days is kind of how we do business. I think that if you look on the administrative side, some of the duties haven't changed from that long list that I showed. But with call volume, we're trying to track that and trying to track our walk-ins and see where trends are and see if volumes have increased. We feel like we're constantly answering the phone and that takes us away from our plans examiner duties and some of our other duties. So, we're truly trying to get a handle on that. We did switch to doing appointments since then, so that's kind of cut down on some of the walk-in volume. And now, we do all of our submittals through an appointment system, which seems to be really working as far as knowing when that flow and controlling that flow a little more than just getting bombarded by walk-ins unexpectedly. So, that's been a big improvement. We also encourage people to meet with us in pre-submittal meetings and appointments prior to coming into the front desk and just dumping all the paperwork on us so that we know that when they come in through the door, they're gonna have a better chance of being complete and substantially complete to be able to go into the system. So, all those things are taking time away from the plans examiner sitting at his plans table just doing plans. In the last couple of years, we've changed the way we do valuations. And now, when permits come in the door, they come in with an affidavit associated with them swearing and attesting to that valuation that that's the number that they really are going to spend to build that project. And at the end, we are also closing the project out with an audit to see if it came in the same as what they originally said or higher or lower and collecting those deficiencies. So, there's a lot of my administrative time involved in chasing after numbers from people and trying to close that out. And we've front-loaded that prior to our final inspections. So, they're anxious to get it done because they want to get their final. So, it seems to be working really well. It's just very time-consuming. Last one on the administrative side is that we require all the referral agencies sign-offs and fees and everything to be collected before we'll even do a building final. And I crack up because when I started in 2001, I have this yellowed piece of paper on my, on my clipboard that says, "As of January 2nd, 2001, all building final sections, inspections will not be performed until all of the referral departments involved in the permit review and issuance have inspected and approved." So, I've been working on this since the day I started in 2001 to make this a reality. And I feel like we're really getting there. I think that we've got the referral agents on board.
Yay!
Well, it is an accomplishment. I really feel kind of proud of that because we make sure that they've paid their water fees, their water tap fees, they've paid sanitation, they've done all these things before we'll even do a building final. And by holding onto that building final instead of holding onto the CO, we're not putting ourselves in kind of a legal quandary with, we did our final, they think they can move in, but they don't have a document saying that's legal yet. So, that was an important thing to accomplish. On the plan review side, after 2007, if you look back at that time, we had gone through a situation where I myself had to appear before the grand jury. And my concept of how important what we do really kind of refocused. I was hired, when I was hired here by Stephen Kneipp, I was told, "Make sure that whatever you do, you can defend in court." And that's kind of how I've done business since I've been here. And in the last two years, I've kind of, really kind of restructured some of what I thought were places where we had some exposure and kind of asked Tony to just be a little bit more in-depth in the plan review time that he spends. And he's, he's came in with qualifications and certifications that are above, beyond anybody that we've had in that position before. And I just feel like the time spent, excuse me, is well-spent. And I think that we're producing a better product that goes to the field to start that initial phase of inspections. Permit submittals are scheduled to manage workload. I brought that up again on this side because that's taken away some of Tony's time to actually be at the plan desk. Call volume is high, especially when turnaround times start increasing. So, as we get busier and as we get into the summer, we always kind of see a trend that our call, call volumes kind of raise up because people are asking, "Where's my permit?" And people are trying to find out what's going on. And so, those little interruptions throughout the day can really change things. And Cindy will mention later that we're trying to do all the management techniques we can about pushing those phone calls to later in the day and doing callbacks at a certain time of the day or maybe once or twice a day instead of constantly answering that phone as far as in the back offices. Front desk, we still, that's a live person answering the phone and we're gonna keep it that way. Higher scrutiny of subpermits. We've, in the last two years, really have been asking for more information on our, on our subpermits. In prior times, we would just ask for a permit application and issue it pretty much across the table. Sometimes it would be a day or two. But now, we're actually doing a plan review on the electrical, but now that we have an electrical master and myself becoming trained as an electrician, we do more in-depth electrical reviews, plumbing reviews, mechanical reviews. We're asking for plans on those. And that's all just adding to our timeline and adding to the amount of time. What we feel at the end, we get a better product out the door. As we're crossing over into the digital world, we're seeing a big impact from having to scan all of our plans. What we do, instead of doing two-hand redline sets of plans, we're actually doing our first redline set, then we either scan it in-house or take it down to the graphics and have that set scanned with the redlines already on them. And then, that way, it goes right into our archival system to be permanently archived. But even on a simple change order, that takes somebody's time to either go physically stand it from the scanner and scan those sheets and take that. I was gonna try to help Tony with some of the load that was sitting on the table. I said, "Give me some easy ones." And I take, some of those easy ones were an hour in themselves when they used to be a 15-minute sit-down and mark it up quickly and get it out the door. But that timeline was greatly increased and impacted by crossing over into the digital side of things. At the front desk, they've already gone into doing double input where they're putting some stuff into Eaton and some stuff into our new CSI program. And each one of those things is adding to the amount of time that we spend each day. Building inspections, once again, coming out of the grand jury stuff that I went through and the tragedy that we had in the valley, we went to a higher scrutiny of, on our inspections of photographing and documenting life safety issues, taking pictures of the alarms and taking pictures of handrails. So, all that stuff is on record that as we inspected that house, that we, we saw all those things and that all those things were identified.
How do you store those?
Right now, we just have them all on our G-drive or our I-drive now. So, they're, they're all in digital format.
And they're associated with a job number?
We put the job address on them and the permit number that they came from.
So, you can go back and call them up?
We can, yes. But that all added time. Now, that's something the inspector has to do when he comes in the next day after a day's worth of inspections. He has to download all that information from his final inspections. And he's still doing some data entry that we use, that we won't have to do once, maybe we go to CSI. But at this time, that's still part of his day. And then, with the new restrictions on the subpermits and being tighter on the plan review and that, we're doing more inspections associated with the electrical alarms and the electrical low voltage stuff. We found that some of the low voltage people were coming in after we had done some of our rough-ins and putting holes in the framing and doing work after we'd already filed, or not filed, but done our rough-ins. And so, we found that if we asked them for permitting upfront and make sure that we could scrutinize them to the same level, that we've got a better quality product out of that as well, so.
And much of that review was determined that we needed to get to that level in the attorney's office. It's not that we're overdoing it. You know, I feel like we're doing it to the appropriate level that we need it to. So, and that does take more time. And I don't see it on here, but also, just some of the reviews we do today are, let me put that in there, but some of the reviews we do today take more time.
Yeah, the in-depth reviews, definitely. Oh, and, and good, that brought us to another point in that same sentence or that same, yeah. Cross-departmental dialogue. I feel like there's a lot more interaction now that there's a, there's a joint office with a, our engineer and Tony, that there's a lot more sharing goes back and forth as far as overlap and things that we both should be watching for. And that communication is great, but it does, it's adding to our timeline because we're not so siloed that somebody's just producing and sending stuff out the door. Zoning's talking to, about building and building's talking to engineering. And I think there's a higher level of that communication going on that is good and very beneficial to what we do. But it's added to the timeline that it takes to just kind of, just be producing work and sending it out the door, so. But that's kind of my piece.
Thank you.
So, Brian, you know, one of the things we've talked about in the past is the delay in getting building permits out, not so much perhaps internally, but because of the delay through referral agencies. And I know that in the past, you've, I don't know, I think you've instituted a new method that when a building. that when a building, when an application comes in, that application simultaneously goes out to all referral agencies at once. But it still seems like it still slows up the process. So how, what are sort of options, alternatives to try to move that quicker through our referral agencies? And then what happens in this case that Lance just said, so then you get a hundred-page change order. And I'm assuming that has to go back out to the referral agencies again?
I think one of the toughest hurdles we have is that we don't control those agencies' timelines so much. They have other duties and other tasks besides plan review. We're just one of their duties. And we try to work with those. Tony does a great job of chasing down a lot of those sign-offs. We implemented a procedure a few years ago that the applicant would take ownership of asking for those referral sign-offs. Because a lot of times, it's their project, they're really focused on their one project. So if they're contacting fire and they're contacting water and sand, sometimes they get a better response or a quicker response because it's them and they're going to continue to hammer and try to get it done. But that being said, Tony still does a lot of chasing of those sign-offs. And that's a large part of his day is finding out, even internally, because we don't always see each other, there's lapses in getting our own internal sign-offs. So sometimes we're waiting and somebody will go on vacation and we didn't know they were done already or whatever. So we're trying to clear up some of those gaps through this dialogue that we're trying to improve and making sure we're talking on a better level and a higher level internally. But there is still delays. And as other departments get busy, that delay, those delays shift. And we can't always predict how long it's going to be down in the salt getting reviewed for fire. We hope that he's going to be in a two-week turnaround time and we kind of try to account for that. But for us to send it out right now, the way that we're doing it, or we send our one set down there, we have to wait until it comes back before we move it forward in the process. Now, as we go into CSI, we hope that
It's our new staff.
Everybody's looking at the same digital version of everything. So there'll be a little bit more of that, being able to, everybody look at something at once. Even bringing on Tammy, we thought would improve the timeline. But at this time, while she's training, there's now three people looking at things instead of just one or two. So as we start to refine and revise, sometimes we have to extend the timeline a little bit to contract it back again to where we want it to be.
I understand it's a challenge. And I guess the point that you made was that if you started to get a complaint from an applicant, that what's holding this up? Well, it's over in this agency or that agency. That I would suggest that you call them to let them know that if I'm the applicant, I need this information so I can continue to pursue getting my building permit.
And that seems to be the best route. It really, I see the greatest success. If an applicant takes ownership and goes and calls fire, because then fire calls and, "This guy says I'm holding up his permit." I'm not holding up his permits, or whoever, one of the other agencies will call me. And they'll actually respond to that. So I, personally, I think that that's the best way to do it, is that the applicant takes ownership. And we've got sheets with all that contact information that we give them upfront and we tell them that's the way that the system works. But right now, we're still doing a whole lot of chasing and trying to get those sign-offs internally. If you have any suggestions for us, I'd love to hear them.
Yeah, no, seriously. I mean, this isn't a meeting to try to get you to make any decisions or give us any huge direction, but if you have some, we'll take it.
I view this kind of as a reality check for us to see where you are, what conditions you're operating in, how you're dealing with everything you have to deal with, given the limitations that you have, so.
Well, a picture is worth a thousand words. Here we go. This is the, this is the active building permit file. And we figured there's over three hundred and something there. So Joanna has always said to me, "Wouldn't it be great if we had like a big map of the entire county with a little light on at every spot where there's an open building permit happening?" That's basically it. I mean, we can do that with GIS, but that's basically it. Those permits, as we said, range from everything, from the guy who hasn't come in for his final, for his chicken coop, to, you know, the house that we think there's one out there that's been eight years. And so they're still there. But that doesn't mean it's just sitting there. Any minute of the day, someone might come in and say, "I'm ready for my inspection on, huh, on one of those three hundred and something." Or, "I finally got you the information you needed so I can go to this next phase," or whatever it might be. So those are all in play on, and here we wanted to show real quickly that oftentimes, from a space perspective, you know, we're working in pretty cramped little areas to try to figure out, you know, what's going on there. And it was funny, when I took that picture this morning, they opened it up to a notice of violation in the file when they opened it up. So there are things we're still hanging on, that we, people need to resolve, things that are just waiting. So with that, the next photograph I wanted to show was, this is, these are some more that need to go out. These are, these are subpermits that are sitting at the front desk, ready. We know these guys are going to come in. There's a file drawer for the electrical, the one-pagers and some others that just need to go out the door. And the next one, Ellen, is the same, but these are the role plans that no one's picked up yet. But that's the volume, if you will. And you see that bend at the bottom, the bend at the bottom. That was this weekend what Tony and Susan were able to get out there to keep moving. So those are just kind of the active, ready-to-pick-up files right there. And then here we have a picture, this just illustrates, it's definitely not the whole picture. We have sixty right now permits in play that need to have some action taken on them. Those are not the ones that are filed and active. These are the ones that have not been reviewed yet. Or they're in some process of review with us. But there's sixty and those are, some of them, most of them are on people's desks or at fire departments or water departments or wherever they might be. So that's a picture. And then I think the next one is my favorite of the, this morning I took the picture of the hundred-page change order that Tammy has to look at.
With a smile here.
Yeah, it was the first thing in the morning. She didn't realize that we just handed her what that meant.
She thinks it's April Fool's Day, right?
She was still, yeah, she was still smiling from the weekend. So we wanted to give you
Need a before and after.
Yeah, just not, yeah, we wanted to give you an idea about the sense of priorities that we have to make every day. You know, every day, I think Tony Puppius put it the best to me. He said, "You know what?" I walked into the office one day and I was like, "Now, why isn't that plan out?" And he said, "Cindy, it's not my priority." I went, "What do you mean it's not your priority?" He said, "Well, I've got the phone calls, I've got the people at the desk that are, you know, hanging over the front counter asking for me. I've got change orders to keep the people active in the field on a permit that's already open that they have, you know, we don't want to shut a job down. So our change order's number one and our change order is easy, not always, as you see. And then we get to the new permits." So those are kind of the priorities of what a daily life is like with the two plans examiners and one building inspector. And then we also, I just wanted to say that I think we've kind of used, as Brian mentioned, every trick in the book, really. You know, we're trying to get better with our tracking system and our new, you know, software programs that hopefully we're going to be able to implement, start implementing here soon. But we, you know, the returning calls, just twice a day rather than taking them as they come. Working weekend days, so nobody usually knows that you're there. I told everybody to stop sending out those emails because people know you're there. And then working from home, a couple days a week, we have several people that actually take plans home. I think we've got the engineer twice a week, one of our zoning officers, Joanna, once a week, and then our plans examiner once a week. To get a little focused quiet time away from the office without the interruption so that we can get things done. As I said, improving our software. We have policies in the office about the length of summer vacation you can take just because this is the name of the game in our jobs. And we also have cross-training of as many people as we can in the field so that we don't have to touch it twice. If somebody's out there and they can look at something and they have the credentials to do that, we try to get it done with one trip. And then, as Brian mentioned, and we're very proud of him, acquiring more certifications for the field work. Brian was number one in his class this year for his electrical certification in the whole valley, number one, and got a hundred percent on his score. We're all really proud of him. So here we have some, the range of options that we're thinking about as we move forward. You know, we could, maybe the board's going to say, "Hey, status quo. That's kind of our own growth management. We can only go as fast as we can go with the staff that we've got." Maybe that's, maybe that's where we want to be. I don't know, we haven't visited it for a while. But, you know, one option of more staff and just, I feel like I'm always in here just going, "Please, we need more money, we need more staff." You know, and I feel like, is that really sustainable as an organization? Is that what we really want to do? And as people always say to me, "Cindy, we can't squeeze one more person in here for now." And even with the reality of a new building, it's not like we're getting a lot more space. We're moving over to the county, but it's not like we're going to get a lot more space. We could look at more consulting out of house. In fact, we are in that mode right now because we're sort of in an emergency mode of looking at bringing on some building inspectors that can help us get out there and look at stuff in the field as well as reviewing plans just because you saw the volume that we have right now. And we don't want it to be December before some people get their permits. And then the other very extreme end of it is we could lessen the intake and have more of a gradual or defined workflow in terms of the number of permits that flow through at any one time. Which all of these things have their pros and cons. But I think some of the questions we really need to ask ourselves when we look at those range of options are, we've put down here, what is the most sustainable from a labor, space and cost perspective? We can't just hire, hire, hire. We don't have the space and we don't have the money. And then what provides the best quality of product? You know, we find that, you know, the pros and cons of the next one, which is, you know, potentially having more consultants out of house. We don't have the same relationships we do today with our contractors. Will the rules be applied the same? And what kind of service and what kind of turnaround time? All those things come into play. And then what provides for a more realistic work plan? That first slide I showed you with, you know, that extensive work plan, what would give us time to be realistic about what's on our plate on top of just getting permits out? Because this year, you know, our expectation is, yes, we're going to bring you that energy code. And, you know, we haven't been able to get to it for years. We keep putting it off, "Sorry, we've got more fires." And we're tired of not being able to produce what we hope to be able to produce. And at some point, we can't ignore the fact that we need to be up to speed with the latest building codes. And we have to do it, and it takes time. And we don't really think that farming that out is the way to go because we know our jurisdiction and what it needs and what those codes need. So that's where we are. And so we're not, we're not coming up with any great solutions and we're kind of throwing it out there today. And we're not expecting you to come up with any. But as you put it well, Steve, it's just kind of your reality check on what is going on in the office. And we hope it hasn't sounded like a big wine fest to you. But we just wanted to show you, this one last picture, this was, if you think it's slowing down, this picture Kurt took on his way into work this morning from Basalt. That picture was taken from Basalt. We know there was an accident on the road, but.
It looked like that from the airport, too.
Yeah, but that was taken from Basalt. So it's not as though we're doing a lot about that actual workflow right now. Things are here. It's another boom in our cycle. And if we think growth management is handling it, we're just fooling ourselves.
Yeah, that was, of course, that was one of my questions. Because I know at some point, we were going to have a joint meeting with the PMZ and look at GMQS and look at sort of, you know, is this really working now as it was originally intended to work? And will that help address some of these issues? Maybe, maybe not, but.
They're going to bring back some hard questions for you, the same kind of thing I did with, you know, do we look at pacing? The actual permits that come out the door? It's not an easy question when you start digging into it. You know, you want to be like Baskin Robbins and pick a number, but it's just not that simple.
But you still prioritize small projects, mid-sized projects and large projects by square footages to try to get those small, easy ones out the door quicker?
Well, it depends on all of Brian's.
When they color coke, did you have a color code?
We do have the simpler levels of plans. But the other thing we try to do is that if somebody's done their due diligence and have chased down those referral sign-offs for themselves too, Tony kind of prioritized those too. Anybody that's put that extra effort in and they're ready to go out the door because he wants to focus his time on productive time. So if he knows somebody's got a long-term hold on something, that set of plans may sit longer than one that everyone else has already signed off on. So we are constantly reshuffling and reshuffling the deck to kind of prioritize things to the top that need to be going out the door.
So the reality of this applicant who came in with a hundred-page change order, the expectations, his expectations, the applicant's expectation versus staff's ability is probably a hundred pages apart.
Could be. And we try to tell them right up front when they come to the door, what our time, I look at our turnaround times pretty frequently and to try to give a best-case estimate at the front door. And I always add a couple of weeks just for that what-if, something goes wrong factor. And we try to communicate that when they first come to the door. I don't know if they don't listen or choose not to, but it's, that is communicated, that when you come to the door, we're looking at, right now, ten to twelve weeks on a set of plans on a single-family, start from scratch. So the smaller stuff, you're probably, the Blues are four to six is what we're quoting right now and the Greens are just a couple of weeks or within a week. So, and Tony does try to keep the ones, the acting. I've kind of, from the way we want to do business, have driven a higher level of change orders because we will not let something go in the ground unless you have an approved set of plans that has all of our approval stamps on it out there in the field when we come to inspect. So it's difficult sometimes when they're waiting to pour concrete and we're waiting on a change order to come through the process and get queued up. So we have to kind of prioritize those at the front and get those turned around quickly so the jobs, as Cindy was saying about Tony, keep those jobs flowing. Because I don't want ever be asked, "Why did this get built?" without an approved set of plans. So nothing gets poured, built, stood up until they have our stamps and everybody's had a chance to scrutinize that, so. That itself has driven a lot more change orders.
The other thing I forgot to throw in Tony's list of priorities before he gets to review a plan is if it's a heavy inspection day, one inspector can't do it. You know, we have to get people out in the field. And so that's why we have combination plans examiner inspectors so they can cross, they can train.
And when we first brought Jane into the mix, we noticed that our turnaround times quickly decreased and we were down to about half of our turnaround time having two people doing that. Unfortunately, though, we've been so busy in the field this season that I've had to use her in the field or go out myself. So we quickly lost that ground we gained by having to utilize her in a different way. That's why we're looking at doing contract. And we had the eight buildings from Music School just coming on top of the load that we already have in-house. So those are the ones that I'm going to probably farm out to consultants and have them do those larger-scale commercial projects for us to kind of keep that from getting into Tony's timeline and really kind of messing up the mix, so.
And that has an impact on our revenues because consulting time is not cheap. They get sixty-five, sixty percent of what we would take in. So while we're appreciative of getting the work out the door, you know, the bottom line and the budget's going to look different.
Let me ask you, how do other building departments deal with this? I mean, throughout the state and the country, do they say, "Listen, we have a fixed staff. Get it to back in line." Completely unsympathetic to it. I've read a couple of fictional books and one of the worst things that can happen is to get sent to the building department in LA. And so, you know, they're just avoid it at all costs because it's, you can be there all day just as a client. So what are the other responses? I mean, this is, this is sort of like a free-market response. You've got a line at the Baskin Robbins or a line at a restaurant. You can't increase staff during that day. People get bad service. You increase your staff and then nobody shows up. And, you know, so, so in the free market, it's a very delicate thing. How do they do it in other building departments? How do they do it in, in, in other depart, in other building departments that you know of?
Have a good to the LA one. Thank goodness, but Brian probably knows more than I do about that.
Well, the closest example would be across the street where it goes into the 16, 18, 20-week time period during peak times. And we've never gone to that level. We've always shuffled staff or whatever we need to do to avoid that. Some jurisdictions do just first in, first out, and you just are told upfront that it's gonna, you're behind this many and here's where you're gonna be. So I think it varies. I, I don't know if anybody has as busy a building department as, as we seem to in our booming times.
With the level of staff.
With the level of staff, we have proportionate to that now.
Brian's gonna add, and Vail, they do their referral departments like water and things like that. They front-load it on the planning piece so that they don't hold up the building permit with those reviews. It does cause problems, though, because it means you have to have that clear at that point and when you obviously get hundred-page change orders, people are not totally clear on what they want to build, even when they come in at building permits, or knowing that...
And when they build it.
Or they just make those, those people submit plans to those departments and it's not done like we do it, where it's, we're working together with them to make sure we have a synchronized product. So they just do their building review. They don't worry about all those other departments. They sort of cut that out of the mix and their review times go down obviously about a bit with that.
But the approval goes indefinitely.
Hasn't changed.
Exactly, it extends your approval time for that planning piece.
Yeah, the other thing I put in the memo was do less. I mean, that's the other option is, you know, not be as thorough with, you know, all of the types of things that we care about in Picken County. And, you know, could we give anything up? Could we take anything off the plate? Those are other questions that, you know, come back to policy questions.
Well, Sean?
And I just, you know, the other challenge to, to your question is the uniqueness of every project and complexity of projects here is something that other building, at least in entities that I've been involved with in the past, it's a completely different game from doing, you know, a set of maybe track housing with certain amount that you're kind of reviewing to what is in essence almost a commercial-like building, but it's a single house and none of them are the same, you know, and remarkably complex. I'm not, so it, it's hard to, to borrow, I think, other building departments' processes and such. Or we're, we're in a pretty small pond, I guess, of like situations. And so it's not a way of necessarily answering the question, but part of what's difficult is the terminal uniqueness of our, our community and our projects.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand that. I mean, I went by a project that was an all-steel post and beam structure, and I think it was a home. But it looked more like the beginning of a Walmart or something. So, and then the complexity contained within it, aside from the sort of structural complexities, the complexity of systems, you talked about low-voltage systems and that there's, there's been an expansion of that whole world and the digital world and how you wire a house for that. So, and then the, the challenges that you're gonna get with the county's experience. And so I, personally, I don't think that cutting back is the answer, but... But I, I don't know how to address, I don't know how to address a workload that expands and contracts without any warning and, and how to maintain a service level in that expansion and contraction.
And the certainty and predictability to your clientele. I mean, there's, wouldn't it be ideal in the building trade if you knew, you know, when your permit came in that it would be out in a certain period of time and you could arrange all your subs and all your, you know, and have, you know, this ideal situation? Wouldn't that be ideal? How we get there is a whole nother, you know, question because something has to give. It's a trade-off of, you know, does the community lose out because we're not taking advantage of an economic time? You know, when people can be working or, you know, is it, is it honed in to sustain a certain amount of that kind of work? All of that, you know, it's a pretty tricky business. And they're, like I say, they're bigger policy issues than just how we set up our process.
Go ahead, I just wanted to make a comment before we close, but...
One particular trend I saw this year that, that's kind of new and I'm not sure, and I kind of thought people were understanding our timeline is that we, we had a constant flow of plans through the winter this year. And I thought that was because they were realizing that it was an eight-to-10-week timeline and that they wanted to get a queue and be upfront. But once warm weather came and everybody got inspired to start building, we still got hammered. So it wasn't as drawn out as I'd hoped it'd been. I would hope that people had kind of got to the point that there was a long lead time. But we'll see if that happens again next year if we stay as busy through the winter at the plans coming in.
Have you had suggestions from the building community on, on what you could do?
I think they're looking forward to our new software system where they can submit electronically. Most people are way ahead of us on that, and I think that they're looking forward to that because they know that things can go out concurrently and for that review. So we've gotten some of that kind of feedback, but what do you think?
Well, one interesting suggestion was for someone to pay for their own third-party plan review.
That would make me really nervous.
I know, I worry about that, who vets those people and how does that all work? But that was an interesting suggestion, was that they would send it off to someone like Safelt or Calatico.
Like a certified engineer, plan inspector, whatever the certification was.
That was the other extreme. I mean, Brian could sit behind a desk and just, yep, that was stamped by an engineer, yep, that was stamped by a plans examiner, yep. You know, we can have one guy behind the desk. But, you know, is that what we want?
The trouble I've seen in the past using consultants, though, is that we end up doing kind of a review of some of our hot-button issues and things that we want to look at because they'll look at code issues and they'll try to look at some of our local ordinances and policies. But I still felt like it was important to kind of make sure we did that double-check of the work that came through doors. So getting that quality from a third party is, is something we're gonna struggle with as we try to use that as a technique.
And Kurt always brings up to me that our codes are really different than other folks' codes. So it's rare that we could accept an engineered stamp septic system because it's not gonna be the septic system that's designed by our code. And so it's constantly a back and forth.
Well, I know some people would say, if you want to build something, just build it in Garfield County where they have different standards and different procedures. And thinking of possible solutions in terms of space, like if we added another person, how would we provide space to them? And there's potential solutions like Flex Time and having more people work at home part of the time or have somebody come in, they work Tuesday through Saturday instead of Monday through Friday kind of things. Or we could maybe find a space at Public Works or someplace that somebody could work. And I, I know we're not gonna solve it here today, it's an ongoing thing, but if we did add, just a thought, if we did add another person on the staff who was really multi-talented and could be helping on the overload now on the building plans, but then they could be working on the energy, updating the energy code or, or whatever when there's a slack period of time, which might not be until wintertime or something. But that might be a way that we could try to tackle some of these more long-term projects by having somebody who's flexible enough, they could do, you know, help out here as they're needed and then work on something else as, when they have time.
Or free up staff to do those other tasks, too. And that's...
So I think we need to move on to our lunch break now. We, you got your whole hour, pretty much, so...
Thanks for listening and hopefully you'll, you have a better sense of what we do.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you can come forward with potential solutions and have another work session at some point.
Well, the P and Z will be back to see you in July.
Just forgot, but it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on lunch break now and we're scheduled to start at 12:45, so...
You know, this is a great thing about time out of the park.
Okay, welcome back. We're going to our next agenda item on Tuesday, May 26th. And this is a budget supplemental for Elk Park additional funding. And we have Lindsey Uter and Gary Tenenbaum are here from Open Space Steph.
So yes, we are here today to ask for additional funds for the Elk Park Depot. To give a quick history on the project, Phase One is the depot structure. Phase Two is everything else in the park, both of which went to bid last year. We got a responder on Phase Two and moved forward with construction on Phase Two last year. And for the most part, Phase Two is complete. There are a few things this year that we need to install, like interpretive information benches. And then once the depot is complete, Phase Two, we'll need to come in and finish the area around the depot proper. But what we're here for today is the funding of the depot. We went to bid twice last year. The first time, we did not receive any response. The second time, we received one response and it was twice the estimated budget. So we decided this winter that we would go forward with one more attempt to find a contractor, which we did. We received four, or five responses over the winter, ranging in price from about $256,000 to about $332,000. It's C dot grant dollars are involved, so C dot needs to approve the bidder. They start by going with a low bidder. In this case, the low bidder was rejected. So we moved forward with getting approval on the second lowest bidder. And so that is where we are today. So the second lowest bidder came in at $269,000 approximately. We discussed with our board, moving forward with the project, and they decided to continue with the project. So where we are right now is that we have a shortfall of $125,000 roughly. Last year, to, to begin moving forward with this process, we approved the $204,000. So $204,000 plus the shortfall takes us to $329,000 total for the depot phase of this project. When our board recommended the supplemental funding for approval, they requested that a portion of it come from the Parks Dedication Fund. Since this is a park, keeping in mind currently that fund has $29,000 in it approximately. So what we're here to ask for today is approval on our supplemental dollars with, so approval on the $125,547 with $29,000 of those, the request is to come from the Parks Fund. The remainder of that would come from the Open Space and Trails Fund.
George?
So where does the Parks Fund come from? And is it, do they continue to generate funds or is this sort of a end, end of the fund?
I believe we're still generating funds from a, basically it's an impact fee levied at the time of development. They're funds that we've been sitting on for, for some time. I need to check, George, I'm actually not sure if we're still levying those funds at this point or not. I think we've stepped back from levying those funds, so I apologize for, for that confusion. But they're funds that the county has been sitting on for some time. We've actually appropriated a portion of them in anticipation, the, the major portion of them in anticipation of a trail along Prince Creek. This project fits firmly within the intent of those Parks Dedication fees. And the partnership with Open, Open Space and Trails makes a lot of sense to, to use the funds for that purpose because a park of this type is a little bit outside of what Open Space and Trails would traditionally be doing. We don't have another department, though, that would administer necessarily this kind of project for a Parks project. And so it made sense to us to levy really the, almost all of the, the remaining funds out of those Park Dedication fees for this project. We don't have another one on the horizon other than that Prince Creek Trail alignment that we've been, still have property negotiations and such.
So this would, this would basically draw down that park fund to zero?
Just about. I think there's...
$407,000.
Something dollars left in it, but...
Just enough for a party up there for a ribbon?
And so, and, and that's really dependent on what happens with this other project, George. We had actually appropriated $700,000, which is why it's coming down that, that much. That will either get reimbursed in full or in part, depending on what happens with the Prince Creek Trail project. And so we'll have anywhere from $350,000 to $700,000 coming back into that fund in the future. So it won't be completely dry, we'll still have opportunities to, to do. But because of the way the appropriations are working now and the fact that we may, we've appropriated that $700,000, the remaining balance that's really unencumbered is at $29,434 or something like that.
Michael?
Do you have a picture of this gazebo?
The depot, yes.
Can I ask a real quick question? For the reason we wouldn't draw it down totally, we just got to keep that account open. So we're gonna transfer that $700,000 and then have your backup to slide that account, which would make sense?
The board could draw it down to, to zero if it's...
Do you have a larger rendition?
I know, I was trying to get this to zoom in.
Those are nice pictures.
Because it's doing it as a pop-up. Here, let me do this real quick. There. So I can zoom out a little further if you have some...
Oh, there we go.
But, yeah, so, I mean, the depot is, we worked with the steering committee in Redstone as well as the Redstone, I'm gonna mess up the acronym.
Historic Preservation?
Thank you. First Redstone Historic Preservation Council Committee to make sure that it was something that would be fitting within their guidelines. And so the idea being that exactly on this location, historically, the depot for Redstone would have been located. And so the architectural design lends itself to kind of a depot look. And then the materials fit in with what is approved through the Redstone Historic Committee. So it is not, it's not a basic, you know, it's not your average kiosk. And then there's interpretive panels inside it. And then we do have grant dollars, like I said, and we've talked about before, but we have scenic byway grant dollars. So the information in there includes information on the community of Redstone and areas around Redstone, as well as a panel on the scenic byway loop.
Steve, I had one more thing.
Yeah.
On the Parks Dedication Funds, I mean, we administer a lot more parks throughout the county, Redstone Park, Jaffe Park. And so, you know, hopefully in the future, if that money comes available because you get reimbursed, we could work together with that fund to work on other parks in the valley so the Open Space Fund doesn't have to take over the full amount of all of that.
Okay, Lindsey, oh, just a second, Michael. So this money is just for doing the, the depot gazebo? And then the Phase Two then would be further, further down the road and would have...
No, Phase Two is almost complete.
Okay, and that's all the landscaping and the parking lot and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were labeled one and two originally because originally the goal was to get the depot built before the remainder of the park. They were labeled One and Two originally because originally the goal was to get the depot built before the remainder of the park. But that just didn't work out timing-wise. And so Phase Two ultimately will be finished after Phase One because of the landscape directly around the depot.
Mm-hmm.
But the majority of it is complete.
Okay, so this is kind of like the piece de resistance, finishing it up. And the park will be basically complete once this is finished. Okay. Michael?
Well, it seems to me going into the future here that you have to be careful of accepting grants from... There has to be a cutoff point for those grants. So this seemed like a really good deal to begin with because it was a substantial amount of money. But it's all it's done is add to the cost of the project. And so almost as you're out, in terms of the benefit of that grant, you just raise the price of this fairly simple structure to a substantial sum. In substantial structure, substantial sum. And I don't blame C.DOT for it. They build their sort of mindset is to build for permanence and build for safety and have close supervision of their contractors on their projects so nothing goes awry. This project doesn't present any of those challenges. And so I would just hope that Open Space, unless you have a two or three million dollar project, I don't know what the cutoff point would be, that you just wouldn't get involved with C.DOT in the future. And I think, although it's hard to bear costs, I think you'd come out ahead if you just didn't accept grants from C.DOT. At this scale, there might be other scales to be fine, but at this scale, I don't think it's been worth it. I'm perfectly in support of this and of the supplemental, but going forward, I think we have to rethink that, that's all.
So Board, is there a general nod of agreement for approving the supplemental?
Will it come back to us right at a regular meeting?
Yeah, so what we do is we accumulate these requests and we bring them back on a formal resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsey.
Great. Thank you. And we'll start to see this soon. Great, because Redstone's been kind of waiting for it, so we'll have to see.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Next, we have a review of future agendas.
Yeah, and this will be hopefully fairly short. Note for the Board, I think you all received an email to this effect, but the June EOTC meeting has been rescheduled for Thursday, July 16th. Not clear to me what was driving that schedule change, but typically it means that some of the other bodies... Yeah, didn't have a quorum, and we try to accommodate that. So that meeting will be moved. We've also been looking ahead to our meetings in July. We had some unbalanced days in there in your future agendas, some really busy ones, some empty ones. So we're looking to rebalance those, so you see those shift in future, future agendas, discussions. And then, believe it or not, we are already starting to calendar for our 2016 budget considerations. And one of the... If we follow the process similar to what we've done the past few years with the Core Focus Budget Meetings, we do have one that would fall during Thanksgiving week. We could move that to the week before, but it would mean probably a seven-hour day of budgets for you. So I don't know if you guys have any preference at this early stage, but I'd give you the Thanksgiving week off. So we don't need to answer that now or if you're ready to.
I can answer. I'd rather not have this Thanksgiving week burdened by a budget and then just cut that seven-hour budget meeting to three hours.
I know you would like that.
Everything.
That's a great, that's a great suggestion.
All in favor, say aye.
We're going to make it eight hours.
Just to punish us.
Yeah, I don't have any problem. That would be just on a Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Thanksgiving is on a Thursday. That's fine with me.
I would to do it Thanksgiving week versus the previous.
Versus an eight-hour epic, right, yeah.
They're so entertaining.
I'd rather not do an epic meeting. And I'm fine doing it on a, like a Tuesday on Thanksgiving week.
I don't know. I haven't decided what I'm doing for Thanksgiving yet, so.
Well, we'll have more time to talk about. Just we've started trying to get those, no pun intended, your time budgeted for budget. And we're starting to plan that now.
That was really bad.
I know, that was... Got to make jokes about budget.
Please, no. Not on our behalf.
And that's really all I've got on future agendas.
George?
Two things. One, our chair and our co-chair will be out, so we'll have to figure out who will run the meeting. And then we have an abatement hearing scheduled for a half hour only. So we never quite know if it's... If we need less time, more time, so...
And we'll work with the assessor's office. We oftentimes don't know until even closer to the meeting whether folks are showing up or not.
But I'm assuming right now it must only be one or two people scheduled anyway to have that shorter timeframe.
Yep. And it may not be any by the time we get here. Do we have a preference on how to handle who will be chairing? Good catch, George. I should have caught that.
Who would be up next?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think.
I think three, Michael?
Well, it's for Michael in charge.
Yeah.
Check. Done and done.
On the... I'm looking at my calendar on the date of the EOTC meeting and I might have conflicts on that, that time. There's Club 20 Policy Meeting in Rifle. I don't know how long that's going to run. That would be the main thing. Might be able to get back by EOTC at four o'clock, but... Then there's a thing following that I was planning on going to at Aces. It's been on the calendar for a long time, but I haven't signed up for it yet. But I don't really appreciate that they changed it and they didn't even consult any of us on what our schedules were. I think that would have been a nice thing for them to do before just picking a date and changing it.
I would agree with that, but my thought is, is all we really need to do is have a quorum from each board at these meetings. And to assume that we're going to get 100% participation is unrealistic. But as long as we can get a quorum from each, and maybe one group couldn't even get a quorum. Otherwise, we'll never find a date that will work.
I'm, right now, I'm good that day, so... We'll just wait and see what happens.
Yeah, let's... By the way, say if we have a quorum and I'll note, Steve, the check, it is difficult to, you know, with 15 different elected officials to work with everyone scheduled to find that date.
And Rachel, I mean, Rachel, I'm sure was planning on being at the Club 20 thing also. So maybe we can find out from Club 20 when they anticipate that being finished would be one thing we could do. Because maybe it'll be done in plenty of time to drive back up.
Yep. If there are no other future agendas, I do have one other thing I'd go over with you guys if there's time, but...
I'm good on future agendas.
So we do have a joint work session this afternoon with the Town of Basalt in Eagle County. And as these things go, when you have three jurisdictions meeting for the first time, the agendas can be sometimes a challenge to kind of get put together to, I think, everyone's... Get everyone's wish list on there. And so how it ended up was a visioning discussion kind of turned into the common themes, which is, you know, that gives us an opportunity to talk about what do we have in common? What are some of our common concerns? The big picture discussion, I think, that you guys were looking for. I think we termed it more as a vision for the Roaring Fort Valley, you know, what are shared visions? Common themes seem to work for the other jurisdictions. And as they're not to that bigger kind of discussion. And then there were some specific areas that I think the jurisdictions, particularly Eagle County and Basalt, had brought forward that may help inform that bigger discussion, too, that they're particularly focused on. And it kind of broke down into categories of affordable living, which would cover kind of housing and transportation. Basalt really does want to talk about childcare and that sort of thing. So we'll see how that discussion goes. Environmental stewardship and anything else that might emerge as part of that discussion. But it's going to be pretty wide open, I think. I know there were some agendas floated out to you guys early on that maybe had some narrower topics or broader. But this is kind of how, on Friday, I was over in Denver and we were all in different locations. We kind of got it gelled into this kind of format. So this is how our afternoon ended up laying out. I think it gives you guys the opportunity of those big picture discussions that you're looking for.
Michael?
See, I was envisioning the first meeting being a big picture discussion and then subsequent meetings could handle just one topic, which is housing, childcare, whatever. Because I think you're able to do so little on those six large topics with 15 or whatever people, 13 people. You know, it just, well...
Well, it may be that you guys don't get beyond the common theme discussion, just like you're saying that. But with, but there's going to be 13 elected officials there sorting through the... 12, I guess, today, sorting through those common themes. It's okay if we don't get through all of it because that is the invitation to come back and talk about more. And I think we recognize that. I think there was some concern that maybe we'd need some jumpstart for some of that conversation. That's where the individual topics came from. So I wouldn't feel there's no real timelines put on it except the beginning and the end. And we'll just see how the discussion goes. So Mike, I think that's still an opportunity. It's always, you know, you have three different organizations getting together. They do it a little bit differently.
I'm just really interested to see, since, I don't know if it was Basalt or Eagle that brought up the childcare education issue with affordability or affordable living. And I'm just really interested to see what their perspective is on that. I think it'll be interesting.
Let me... This actually came through our Healthy Community Fund, but it is for the joint work session for Town of Eagle, Basalt. And it's a little background paper on that. And it really seems to be focused on a group of nonprofits in the Mid Valley that have been working with Basalt on access to affordable childcare in particular, which is something that we do support through the Healthy Community Fund. And so I have not read this. I just, we just became aware of this document today, but it might provide a little bit of background. But I think it kind of fits in to the overall affordability model, you know, transportation, childcare, housing, and that's...
Is the cradle to career is that part of John Bennett's thing that started out of...
It's part of the Aspen Institute.
Okay.
No, Aspen Foundation.
Foundation, yeah.
Okay. Isn't John Bennett involved? Is that this? Okay, just so I'm familiar with where. Thank you.
So anyway, just since we had a little bit of time, I wanted to, you know, just make sure that you guys had that in your hand. It looks like this is going to be the structure going forward.
So you had one question down here is next steps or number three, facilitate discussion. So this is just going to be kind of Wild West, wide open? I mean, no one's going to lead this or are we going to... How?
You know...
I just can't picture this.
Basalt is going to be taking lead. They're hosting the meeting. And so I think between Jackie and Mike, they're going to be trying to facilitate the discussion. Yeah, and George, beyond that, I think I wouldn't want to hurt all of you, so I don't know how that's going to go.
Look at this like the very first ever meeting of EOTC getting together with all the elected officials without a clear vision of where they're going.
Well, it's like that at every EOTC meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that's changed.
And if need be, staff will step in and try and provide some facilitation and such. But I think it's going to be a good initial discussion. I personally will be surprised if we get past item one in the time allowed. I think it will probably take on a little bit of a life of its own, but we'll see.
I thought you were going to say I personally will not be there.
No, personally, yeah, I'm going to.
Like I'm dropping you off at the interstate, but okay.
So Sean, we had talked about having some staff members there. Are we going to have?
We'll have some staff members in the... We'll have some comm dev staff in the audience. I don't think we're going to have... I just talked to John Ealy and such and he is one, you know, he was asking if we thought we were really going to go deep into the waters issues. I told him I didn't think so, so I think he's got another...
That's the very last one, huh?
Yeah, so, but we will have some comm dev staff there.
And they won't be doing presentation, but more as a resource if we have questions or... Just so they can hear the discussion, too?
Right, because I felt like the, you know, general kind of themes and vision kind of discussion would probably affect kind of land use considerations the most going forward, so, yep, they will be in the audience.
Okay.
And that's all I've got for you.
Okay, that's clear as mud.
It's on our show.
Let's see. Dallas, are you Dallas?
I am.
Okay, Dallas, you are next up on our agenda and we're even on time. So we have a citizen board interview of Dallas Blaney for the Election Commission. And Dallas, welcome to our board meeting. We always interview people before we appoint them to boards. And then some of the positions we interview, when somebody is up for renewal, the Election Commission is not one of those, but it's a chance for us to get to know you and ask some questions. So we appreciate you applying for this position. And then different commissioners will have questions for you. Michael, do you want?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. So a general question is what is your interest in being on the Election Commission Board? And how do you feel like you're qualified for the position?
Okay, I'm interested in getting involved in some kind of public service. I moved here in December, and so I'm looking to get involved in the local community. I applied previously for the financial advisory board and wasn't accepted for that position. So I thought that my expertise or my knowledge of political science, I have PhD in political science. I've been teaching courses on American government and various other political science courses for a long, long time. And so I thought that that experience might translate more clearly into this position. So I thought I might be a better fit for this committee or commission, so.
I just had a procedural question.
Yeah.
John's been helping me with it because of my past interaction with the election committee. We had, we have to be party balanced, you know? We have to have X amount of party members, local party members. So John's going to see what he can track.
So just...
Says they have to be...
To Patty's, to Patty's question, the qualifications, members shall be registered electors of Pickin County, which I believe you are, Dallas. And then, to the extent possible, all members shall not be of the same political affiliation. And so we'll look at that.
Okay, I just knew that that was somewhere in there. Just so you know, too, I appreciate you wanting to be involved in the Pickin County... you wanting to be involved in, in the Picken County commissions and committees. It's, it's a great opportunity to get to know the county, to get to know staff and get to know people in the community. This committee doesn't meet a lot. I would like, when we have issues with voting systems, electronic voting systems and, and Janice will get the, will get the election committee together. So it would nice if, it'd be nice if they were more involved. They do oversee elections. They stand in the room and make sure that procedures are being followed. But it, it's interesting. So hopefully it'll be your first foot in the door and we can get you involved in more. That would be great.
Okay. I think so too.
Also, yeah, looking at your resume, I thought, well, maybe this would be an opportunity for you to add some input into the election commission and maybe the, you know, the commission could become, become better because of it, just having, having your knowledge and experience in political science things.
Okay.
So, I mean, the, we do have like a bylaws that has a certain charge to fulfill, but.
Okay.
Michael?
So John says here, under the election commission, role is to perform duties set out in Article three of the Picken County. What are those duties? Do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
We're testing.
Give me just.
They oversee elections.
I got the bylaws. I got the bylaws.
Yeah.
So the functions under the bylaws receive in writing any, okay, the commission's function responsibilities are as follows. Receive and writing any appeals within three business days after the decision of the act complained of, you know, in relation to, to an election. Hear all evidence and make a timely determination on the appeal. And so, and, and the past, this is, the elections commission has not met often. You know, most recently it was around open records requests made by one of our citizens and whether the ballots could be viewed or not.
So it can be, although it doesn't meet often, it can be serious responsibility. And the burden can be a burden that you'll feel. So.
No, it's a big deal one.
So be prepared for that, when and if it ever happens again.
So thank you for volunteering for that.
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask your political affiliation. I noticed that Roger Nicholson on the board is a Republican, is my understanding, although it doesn't say on our chart. And then two people, two of the members, it says unaffiliated. And then we had one position that's vacant for a Democrat and one position vacant that doesn't specify.
That's what we'll need to look into and then.
And maybe we're not even allowed to ask what your political affiliation is for this. I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think you're allowed to ask. What I would encourage you to do though is that, you know, explore Dallas's, you know, kind of capabilities to weigh the types of decisions that would be put in front of him as a member of the commission. And maybe offline, we can ask the, the question and, and have that information available for you as you, you see. But right now, I don't think you have an unbalanced body regardless of what appointment you make. And so to, to me, it's more about evaluating the, the fit.
No matter, no matter what Dallas's party is or lack of party, it still would be a balanced board because right now it is, we have a balance.
It's not all one affiliation.
Yeah. Okay. So George?
Oh, I have a question. Dallas, thanks for replying again. I remember when we, we interviewed you the last time, I think we were for the financial advisory board. I just curious again, given the extent of your background and your resume and your education. So I just want to see the nexus. So you've got a PhD in policy, but you're, you're wilderness land manager or?
Yeah, I'm a wilderness, that's my title. I'm the Wilderness Program Manager for Challenge Aspen. So basically my job, they have quite a bit of property up above Rudi Reservoir, about 136 acres. And so my job is to maintain and take care of that property and any of the programming associated with it.
Where is that?
It's 17.4 miles up the frying pan road. It doesn't have a specific address. It's just one of those remote places. But if, if you go up and above Rudi and just as you're starting to come down, it's on the left-hand side.
On the left-hand side, there's a, there's a road that goes up. Is that like an old Boy Scout camp back up there or?
That I don't know. I don't think so. I know that, I dug into the history there. Maybe. I, I don't know. I, I do know at one point in history, there was a sawmill back in there. I don't know about a Boy Scout camp, maybe.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
Not a bad place to work.
No. I was just up there this morning. It's beautiful.
So any further questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you very much for applying. And it takes us, we don't get back to you immediately, but within a, a couple of weeks, we'd probably be making a decision on.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great, thanks.
Have a great afternoon.
See you again.
Let's see, we don't have Ellen here right at the moment for the Mid Valley Metro District. We could go into open discussion items while we're waiting for Ellen to get here.
Yeah, those are, those, those could be short too. I just remind the board that on June 3rd, we're having our progressive lunch that we're starting to advertise. You'll see some advertisements coming out in the newspaper and through PSAs. We'll also, I believe later this week, be releasing our picking connect outreach on facilities. We completed a, a video with several staff kind of doing a, a tour of, you know, outlining some of the challenges that, that we're facing and trying to address with our facilities project. So our, our outreach is really starting in, in earnest on that now. And that was really the only open discussion item I had for you. I can try and email.
John, could you outline the progressive lunch again for me? What, what, what the purpose is and what we're doing with it?
Yeah. So the progressive lunch is we're going to invite interested citizens in to basically do a tour of, of our facilities with staff. So we can talk about some of the improvements and customer service that we're hoping to be able to make, some of the challenges that we're facing with our, our facility. So what, what a progressive lunch is, is you have to walk to those various locations to get the different parts of your lunch. And so we will have it catered. We will start and finish in this room. We'll be going over to look at our public safety, you know, the old courthouse and, or the sheriff's department and police departments and the judicial districts located, go over to city hall, look at our community development department, come back over here and look at what's happening with elections and the clerk's office, some of the, the key areas that, that we're really looking at. And then end up back here with an overall discussion and opportunity to get input from the citizens that participated about what would they like to see as we plan and design our new facilities.
And are you going to film it?
Uh, no, but we did do a video with a similar tour, basically. So we've got, that's a staff led. We thought it was going to potentially be awkward for participants to start and stop and do retakes and such. So we, we did do a video with staff of the same kinds of areas and that will be on our website.
Yeah, you know, some sort of informal video. And I, I don't think it needs to be set up, but I think the, so it can't be a very large public that's going to do this tour. So the larger public would like to see, I think, questions posed, if those people are representative or not representative or, I mean, I, I'd just give it a thought. Because, and then all you'd have to do is edit it a little bit, maybe down. You don't need to have videos of people walking from building to building. But, but I think since it is a fairly discreet group, that, that unless you had them every day, you wouldn't really reach much of the community. I, I don't know. That's.
It's a good thought.
That's all I'm thinking.
Yeah, let's put some, some thought into how we, we might do that. And we, we want to also be respectful to folks who are participating. Sometimes they're more or less comfortable being on.
Well, maybe, maybe you just have whatever the county presentation is and we know the, we know the, and if, I.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just thinking, well, we'd need 10,000 progressive lunches to really reach people. That's all I'm thinking.
And that, that's why we are doing the, the one online component. But I appreciate what you're saying is, well, how do you capture the dialogue that's taking place between the staff and the, the citizens that are participating? So let, let, we'll think on that.
I had one item that's, be a short one. It's just to toss out an idea. Sheriff Joe DeSalvo approached me yesterday after the memorial day dedication. This, so this is his idea. The Huts for Vets was having problems with vehicles. And Joe said the sheriff's department is very soon going to be rolling over some of their vehicles and putting them out to the, into the auction. And he, he would like us to consider donating one of the, one of their trucks to the Huts for Vets. He thought that would perhaps be a better use of the truck than just putting it out to auction because it's well, well maintained ones. And it would require, I mean, approaching Paul Anderson and see because they, they have had a vehicle donated to them that he talked about yesterday. But whether they could use two vehicles and whether it would be appropriate to have one from the sheriff's department go to them. But it's an idea that I thought I'd toss it out there.
Yeah, they have two vehicles now. They have one donated. They had two different vehicles donated. Yeah, I would definitely check to see if Paul, if they have the capacity to absorb another vehicle and maintain it and keep it on the road and, and need. But if that's something the county can do. I know we've, we donated an ambulance a couple years back to Burlington, Mississippi. So maybe it's something we can do.
Certainly at the board's discretion. It's a asset of the counties and what we do with them now is we put them back at, out to auction and we roll those funds back over into equipment replacement. The, the board can certainly, you know, allocate those resources. But yeah, we can reach out to Paul and see if, they're high mile vehicles at the point that we're turning them over, but they have been well maintained. And so if, if it's the board's wish, we could certainly explore that. And then you would have to adopt a resolution, basically transferring that ownership.
Yeah, I think we should get, you know, investigate it and get the facts on it and then make a decision at that point. Maybe, maybe talk to Joe DeSalvo too about his idea. George?
A short one. It sort of ties with future agendas. I forgot. There is, at least what I read in a paper a week ago or so, there's a, it looks like there's going to be yet another bike tour going through our county as well as starting in Carbondale. And, and the route is, at least what I read in the paper was not very clear. It's on the, started Robert Dale and going up Stoneout Creek and going up Capital Creek. And I'm assuming it's going to use the Rio Grande Trail. So I've got a, and I talked to Mike Kramer and, and at that point last week, the permit was sitting on his desk. And, and I was concerned about how we were going to, and this was on a Saturday in June, I think June 20th or something, this, this event's supposed to take place. It's from an out, out of town organization. And the quote from the organizer was that they're hoping that this event is going to grow by leaps and bounds because of the popularity of wanting to come up and experience our great roads to ride. So, so that leads to perhaps a, a yet another discussion on how we want to manage permits, special events, certainly from outside organizations that are coming in and monopolizing our trails and our roads and the use of our sheriff's department, public safety, ambulances and everything else. So that's a concern of mine. And I don't know if Mike Kramer has any additional information in terms of how this, this road tour is going to be facilitated and managed from a safety point of view. But I think it's a discussion we should revisit again on a future agenda. So perhaps get an update from Mike Kramer sooner than later.
Yeah, it's going to have, be happening soon. So we should have that.
Exactly. And I don't know whether he's issued a permit. And, and again, it's sort of like, there's, there's an assumption that, that this group has applied for a permit, but, but they're going to run this tour sort of regardless. They've already got their marketing pieces out. They've already accepted monies, whatever. But it was, again, it's sort of like, you know, is the tail wagging the dog on this? And, or is there an expectation that anybody wants to run an event up here in Picken County? They could just go ahead and promote it and then ask for a permit and ask for, you know, ask for forgiveness first or later. So anyways.
Another consideration on that, if it is held in June, the Chip and Seal Project on Snowmass and Capital Creek Roads is underway now and it's scheduled to go through the end of June. So they're liable to be riding on.
Well, that may deter a future rider or something.
Yeah. They might have a whole bunch of tar and gravel stuck on their bikes going through branded Chip and Seal or something.
Well, and we, we do try and coordinate those kinds of issues with our construction and permitting. And it is, and it's a, a, a challenge, George, as, as you're laying out. And we have tried, I think, to, to have those discussions and put kind of rules and parameters in place. And I think we have struggled with that historically, but we can certainly bring back. There's really two events that the board has been kind of looking at the permits before they've been issued. And that's the Pro Challenge Bike Race and X Games. We typically are doing briefings. Most of the other, really all of the other special events permits, unless they're requesting a refund of the, the fees as a nonprofit, are being reviewed administratively. So there's a lot of activity happening every year, particularly this time of year going into it. And, you know, we, we, we talked about kind of how, you know, do we want to put the brakes on? Do we not want to put the brakes on? Is this, what's the balance between economic vitality and impact to the community, which I think is, you know, George, what, what you're bringing up. And we can definitely bring that discussion back. I think we're going to need to really kind of create a vision, I think, of how we see these kinds of special events fitting in to our community and see if we can't build some, some rules around that. Because I think we, we constantly struggle between visions of it being an economic driver and also the impact to the community. We haven't quite landed on, so what does it look like if we're successful? You know, what does it look like for our community? What does it look like for economic vitality?
Just to weigh in on that, I think that as part of the master plan updates, you'll be seeing some of the caucus areas we'd like to weigh in on, specifically on special events and benefits and impacts. And use of the Rio Grande has, has come up in discussions. So you may be getting some, some feedback from the caucuses on that third topic.
Yeah, at the same time, we did the project where we, you know, surveyed users and such through the Open Space and Trails program. And we got different kind of feedback. And I think that's a struggle that you guys have as policymakers and such, is, you know, you're, you're getting different feedback from different audiences about the benefits and, and impact. So happy to bring it back. I think it's going to take a few bites at the apple in terms of probably longer term discussion, you know, not just on this event, but how do you balance those things?
Right. And I just wonder whether, at least we can get an update and see the status of the permit of this event. And if it's going to be permitted, what sort of resources are going to need to be allocated? How, how this is going to unfold? Because again, it's, it's on a Saturday, mid-June. It's certainly going to impact not only the Rio Grande Trail, but some of our secondary county roads.
Well, and it may be what we should be doing and fine, fine bringing this, this event back. But the fact is, is we've got a number of events that happen on, on weekends and affect trails and roads, whether it be, you know, like the, it's like called Ragnar relays and those sorts of things. And so, you know, maybe a start so we can start to get our hands around what the impacts are. Although it'll extend the work for you and, and, and staff and probably the wait time for applicants would be setting some parameters for. would be setting some parameters for permits that you guys want to have brought in front of you. Because I suspect, George, that this is one that you've seen and heard about, but there are probably others that meet the same kind of criteria. And we want to be sure we're treating all those in the same way.
Michael?
Well, that's a good thing for our website is to have a calendar of potential special events or a calendar of scheduled special events or something for the entire county to look at and to be able to do plans.
Yeah, and we have been, we are able to provide to applicants now. And of course, the challenge there is that you have special events being planned in multiple jurisdictions. You know, you may have a special event housed entirely within a city limit that may be at the same time as an event being applied for in the county that may also go into the city limits. And so, we're trying to, we've got those calendars together now, not available on the website yet. That's the next step.
Okay. Any other items for open discussion? Okay, Ellen, you could come up to the table there now on our last discussion before we head down to Eljebell is Mid Valley Metro District Expansion Referral Comments.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, so we are seeking board review and comments and ultimately approval of the letter in your packet. It is a comment letter regarding the Mid Valley Metropolitan District's request for a service expansion, excuse me, to accommodate the Tree Farm planned unit development. That is, at this point, a development that's proposed for 400 residential units and approximately 134,000 square feet of mixed-use commercial. And the latest iteration actually has a hotel as a part of that, as a part of that proposal. Comments are due tomorrow. The, by way of background, the District Service Extension Request is being processed concurrently with a preliminary plan for the Tree Farm PUD. The board weighed in on that preliminary plan proposal in December of 2014 and actually recommended denial and based on several concerns. The preliminary plan is just now coming up for review before the Eagle County Planning and Zoning Commission, early June. I think it's June 4th. And from there, it will go on to a review by the Board of County Commissioners and then, and on to final plat, if it is approved at preliminary plan. So, no hearing has been scheduled yet for the Metro District Service Expansion, but the comments are due tomorrow. The attached letter, attached to your packet, reiterates that we, the Board of County Commissioners have not supported the preliminary plan for the Tree Farm historically. I think George actually went to the sketch plan hearing before the Eagle County Commissioners and expressed our concerns. However, recognizing that approval of the PUD is a potential outcome, the comment letter recommends that service expansion only be allowed in the event that the Tree Farm PUD is approved. So, it's not a service expansion that is approved absent of a specific, site-specific plan. Also, because of the extensive amount of water that will be used to service, the scale of development, we've recommended that stringent water conservation measures be required as part of the service agreement and that consideration be given to dedicating a percentage of residential sale proceeds to the Roaring Fork Conservancy or a similar water conservation entity to maintain minimum stream flows or water quality monitoring stations on the Roaring Fork River. So, that's where the comment letter direction goes. And if the board has any comments, recommendations for modification, we can go ahead and make changes and bring it back for your, I guess, for chair's signature tomorrow and ship it off to Eagle County. Comments?
Do we have any idea where the water, the clean water is coming from? I mean, that's a lot of water.
It is a lot of water. The district, the metro, well, as I understand it, the Tree Farm would be required to provide some of their water rights to the district. Their water rights, they apparently own a pretty substantial share of the Robinson Ditch water rights. The Metro District potable water rights primarily come from wells, as again, just based on my review of the application. So, beyond that, I can't tell you. Apparently, there is, there is.
Some substantial water out there somewhere.
Adequate water to provide the service according to the district.
And that district is the same district that serves downtown Basalt? So, the new hotel and any of that development would also be then impacting that same district, water and sand district?
I believe so. I know that.
I don't think there's any other water provider or sand provider in that?
Yeah. I know that, yeah. I think you're right, Patty.
So, that's a lot of potential future impact to the water and sand district. That's a lot.
It is a lot. It's a, yes. And the district already covers this PUD area, but they would have to expand service lines, basically, to accommodate.
Lots of infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael?
So, how does this referral come to us, Ellen?
It comes to us as a result of, I think we have, I don't know if we have an IGA, but with Eagle County, to get referrals on substantial subdivisions of this nature. And so, yeah, it came to us from planning staff. I think we may have an IGA with Eagle County, John. I don't know if you can help me with that. But for referrals of.
We do have an IGA with Eagle County.
Where there's a substantial subdivision of this nature.
And so, this is a subset of the major proposal, which is the.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Because the district is requesting expansions, service expansion to accommodate that PUD, it has come to us.
Seems to me like they're putting the cart before the horse, doing the Metro District, wanting to extend the facilities to the property before anything's been approved on it. Do you have any sense about why they're proceeding along this line?
Well, interestingly enough, that apparently the district received a 1041 approval some years back when the Tree Farm first came in with something like 250 residential units and less commercial square footage. They received the 1041 approval several years back for that service. And now, they are coming in to expand on the original approval. So, as a practical matter, they talk about putting the cart before the horse. I believe the district got approval to expand several years back. So, I don't know, I assume that it is so that in the event that a PUD approval is obtained, that the water service and wastewater agreements are in place. I think the preliminary plan is akin to our detailed submission plan in Picken County, where you have to show that you can provide infrastructure for the subdivision proposal. And so, perhaps they are required as part of preliminary plan to at least show that services not only available, but in place before they get to final plat review. I'm not that intimately familiar with Eagle County's subdivision process, but that's a guess.
If the, now, I know the town of Basalt would like that project to be within the town, the city limits. And the project developer doesn't want it to be, wants it to be in unincorporated Eagle County. If the project did end up in Basalt city limits, would it be the Basalt Metro District? Or would it still be the Mid Valley Metro District that would provide?
Yeah, I spoke with Basalt. Actually, I asked the same question. And they do not have the, Basalt does not have the capacity and this would be the district serving in either case.
Okay. Well, I think our letter makes sense to have it provisional that, you know, if the thing does get approved, they need, obviously, they need to have water and sewer connection. This would be, you know, are giving approval to that if the thing, if the whole project is approved.
I just hope that the Mid Valley is ready for an enormous, enormous impact. I mean, the impacts on roads, the impact to their services, city, I mean, if they don't annex, they're going to have to have sheriffs, more sheriffs. 400 homes and all that commercial space is going to have a huge demand for lots of local, not, beyond. Public safety is going to be hugely impacted, fire, ambulance and, you know, law enforcement. It's going to be huge. Plus, just driving by that impact, you know, it's bad enough for me on one side to see all that growth. And now, it's just going to, that whole core is going to be slammed. And I know progress is inevitable in some places, but, you know, it's pretty huge.
The Board of County Commissioners weighed in at sketch plan and recommended denial and a preliminary plan, which hasn't gone forward yet, but again, recommending denial. And I understand from the Eagle County staff that they are anticipating three or four Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and three or four Board of County Commissioner meetings. So, there will be more time to weigh in if any of our board members want to or would like to direct staff to go to meetings, to provide comments. We can, there will be more opportunity, but you're right clearly, Patty, if this goes forward.
They have their, they have their own Planning and Zoning Commission on this side, right? So, hopefully though, the Eagle County Commissioners will hold their meetings on here, on this.
They happened to pass.
I think that's critical that they continue that. I think that's why it's meant to do so.
I don't know that this will come up at your, as part of your discussion today.
I think we're leaving it out of today.
Not this particular project. We can't, but we could talk about some of the impacts and starting with affordable living ideas and things like that.
Okay, thank you. So, I will get this, put it on your letterhead and get, is it all right if I get it to Steve tomorrow for signature?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are we done? Is that it?
Okay, that's everything on our agenda unless somebody has anything else to bring up. And do you have?
Where are we meeting?
I need a ride down. I don't need a ride back all the way, part of the way back.
No, no, where are we meeting? Where to get a ride?
I think we're meeting at the Eagle.